Good evening. It is 6:04 PM and I am calling to order this meeting of the National Board of Education. It's Tuesday, October 12, 2021, and we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Just some housekeeping items as we get started. I just want to remind everyone that we have very specific rules for our meetings. Some of those rules are regarding decorum at public meetings, and so we're asking everyone to remember not to interrupt people when they are speaking, to save your comments for the two public comment periods, and to stay in your seats unless there is a reason to get out of your seat. The other housekeeping item today is that the board does have a rule that all persons in the boardroom without exception need to be masked, so I'm asking everyone who is not masked to please excuse yourself to the lobby and get a mask now. Okay? I see Ms. Johnson is not wearing a mask this evening. The purpose of the masking rule was to make sure that everyone in attendance has to be protected from any kind of virus floating about the room. This includes staff members, our student members, and members of the community who had mentioned that they've been unable to attend as their personal medical issues prevent them from attending. So Ms. Johnson, I must ask you now to go and get a mask or leave the meeting and participate by telephone.
Ms. Raymond, I'm not going to go through this again with you because even when Ordinance 020029 was in effect, it said, "Exception for face covering requirement for health reasons contained in Section 7 of 020118 shall require a person to have on his or her immediate possession a written document executed by a medical doctor, registered nurse practitioner, or physician's assistant authorized to prescribe medication," which document certifies that the practitioner has warned the individual that cannot wear a mask because it would pose a risk to his or her health. Then you go into Executive Order 74, that was in effect, and this all passed muster with legal.
That was very interesting, and thank you for sharing with it.
You know what, Ms. Raymond?
However, neither of those things are in effect nor do they influence our orders.
But, Ms. Raymond, you have to have reasonable accommodations, and I do have the letter here from my doctor. We keep going over this and HIPAA privacy. So if a person has a health issue and cannot wear a mask, you cannot force them if there's a health issue because of the fact that, yeah, well, wearing masks and everything, and I'm sure people are...
You are correct, Ms. Johnson. Excuse me, Ms. Johnson.
No, excuse me, Ms. Raymond. You have harassed me and bullied me over this whole issue on my health since day one.
Excuse me. Could I please have a police officer in the room? Ms. Johnson, you do not have the floor...
Stage dismissed, Ms. Raymond.
You do not have the floor at this time.
You stage dis...
You may participate...
I will have my lawyer contact you.
You may participate by phone.
Too late now. Meeting was already started. You will hear from my attorney. Don't do this to a city board member I talk to.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. If you wish for us to call you in, please feel free to text me at any time as I'm using my telephone to access the board meeting agenda.
This is discrimination.
And I will call you into the meeting should you text me at any time this evening. Okay, thank you. With that out of the way, if anyone else chooses not to wear a mask, they are welcome to share their thoughts with us via email and participate by watching the meeting via ETV's website or local access television. Okay, Ms...I'm sorry. Ms. Bishop, could you please call the roll? And then could Ms. Timmons lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson is not here. Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Ms. Ziem is not here. Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Also in presence, we have Ms. Brunel, Mr. Parker, Dr. Sarfati, Dr. McKinney, and Mr. Donovan. I'm sorry, I forgot the prayer. Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Timmons. All right, so this evening, I am happy to welcome Ms. Angela Walsh and Ms. Maggie Jones from South High School, who have a few words to say to us about the beautiful art exhibit that is here on our walls. Good evening. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. Can you hear me okay?
No.
No?
Try again.
Hello?
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us, members of the board. We're going to discuss some of the artwork that is on display on the walls. My name is Angela Walsh. I'm Director Coordinator of Arts for the secondary level and Photography and Art Teacher at South.
My name is Maggie Jones. I teach Drawing and AP Art at Nashua South.
So a couple of things. I'll just speak to the photography because these are my students up here. There are two different types of photography on the walls. Some of it is digital, which is pretty obvious, some of the ones that are digital. Those are students that took photography last spring, so they took it mostly completely remote, all from home. There is a combination of some assignments that have to do with long exposure, like there's an example under the clock on the left side where you see a student took a flashlight and kind of moved around the room at a semi-rapid pace, and they had the shutter open the entire time, so it captures the light trails. There's a picture of a dog's eye using the macro setting. That student has graduated and gone on to college now. We have some photography that's about capturing mood, so we had the theme of spookiness, and there's a really cool example where a student has a creepy mask on, and I believe that student recruited her brother to be a model in the photo. And so what's nice about digital photography is the students have the option to photograph in color or make it black and white. And then there's some other examples that are the high contrast, black and white images that were done this fall, actually just a few weeks ago, in the darkroom. So those are called photographs, where students were asked to bring in objects and put them down onto some photographic paper in the darkroom, and they exposed it to light and processed it through the chemicals. Since then, those students have now shot their first roll of film and developed their own film and have actually made some five-by-sevens in the darkroom. So they just finished up that first darkroom experience, which is nice because when we were all remote, everything was digital and done very quickly, but now everybody's hands-on, and they seem to be really enjoying it. So that's that. Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the drawings and the paintings that you see up on the wall. So again, I teach Drawing, which is a non-leveled intro class here at South. The shoes that you see up on the wall are their first real project in Drawing, where they are learning basic perspective. They are anamorphic drawings of shoes. Anamorphic is a form of perspective that's forced. So when viewed from straight on, the shoes appeared warped and a little bit sort of off, and when viewed at a side angle, if the student was able to make sure that there was a high-contrast drawing and that they were including all the shadows and the highlights, then the shoe should appear 3D in that 2D form. So that's why there's photographs above the drawings. That's where you will then see that the shoe will take on more of that 3D effect. For the other paintings and drawings that you see, those are work that is done in AP either last year or the beginning of this year. For our AP Drawing course, students are tasked with creating a sustained investigation, and what that is, is a process of students posing a question that relates directly towards them or their life, and through that question, they then create art that examines and sort of takes apart that question. So their work will progress, and it's a study of 10 to 15 pieces where the students are communicating visually specific ideas about their question. So I'll explain a few. The first one we'll talk about is a portrait where the woman is sort of being encased by the foliage around her face. This is a student who examined the effects of Alzheimer's on the individual and the family relationship. So specifically, the portrait was of a woman who once enjoyed gardening, but through unfortunate...through Alzheimer's, as it progressed, it became an overwhelming task for that person. We also have, let's see, we could do the bees in the corner there, all congregating sort of in the hive, is a student that's currently investigating sort of social norms and the effects or examining sort of in the animal world versus the human world. So again, the student, that's their first piece, and they're going to be creating about 10 to 15 pieces that furthers investigates that question. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you very much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't want to ignore the QR codes that are on the walls. Those are, if you're interested in seeing some three-dimensional pieces from the ceramic students, it was kind of hard to bring the pottery in. You know, you can scan that with your phone. And there are some other work on display at Central Office that is also from South, and next month, I believe Sunset Heights will be displaying on these walls. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I so enjoyed coming here last week for the JS SBC meeting and seeing all the art on the walls for the first time, and I'm very excited to hear that this will be a monthly installation. So, thank you. Did anyone else have any questions or comments? Ms. Oden?
I just want to comment on this. We're talking about GPAs and Advanced Placement courses and all, and it's classes like this that maybe some of those kids could enjoy and gain a lot from rather than worrying about their GPA, and I think some of the students have mentioned that, and I think tonight presents us a real good picture. I didn't mean to use that word, but of the advantages you can get when it's not just about GPA, it's about your growth as an individual and appreciating the arts. So I just want to, I want to, as I looked at this, that's what I thought about. So thank you so much, and thank you to Ms. Walsh and...
Ms. Jones.
Ms. Jones, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, I really appreciate you all coming out tonight. Okay, next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Did anyone have anything to add or remove from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Okay. So it was moved by Ms. Timmons. I think it was seconded by Ms. Oden. Okay? All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We didn't have anything removed. We didn't have any communications outside the Consent Agenda. All right, so it is time for the Public Question Comment Period, limited to items on this agenda. We have a 15-minute time limit for this. I believe that the sign-up is over by the podium.
On the podium.
Oh, it's on the podium. If someone could grab that for me, please, I would appreciate it.
Oh, it's a race.
Thank you. I think we'll put it over on the other side afterward for the Second Question Comment Period. All right, so I'm going to read off the first name and then also the person who is on deck, so to speak, so that we can get ourselves ready. The first person is Tracy Poole, and the...oh, she wanted the Second Comment Period. Okay, that makes it easy. And then the next person is Michael Joseph, and then Crystal King. Go ahead, Mr. Joseph.
Michael Joseph, 184 Main Street, Nashua. I just wanted to make a, I think it's a general statement. I'm not sure that it's covered in the agenda, but I'll be quick about it. There are, there's a difference between, I was reading today, between science and religion. Science has to be, is a very meticulous process through using microscopes and chemical reactions and different things to make sure that something is valid and true, whereas religion is exactly the opposite. It doesn't rely on any proof of anything. So it's a personal thing within oneself, and one gets a sense of it according to whatever level of faith, if you will, they might have. So I'm just basically making this the statement that science and religion are opposites, they're not the same thing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Joseph. Just a reminder that this is for comments related to items on the agenda. I will wait to see where people are going, but please try and keep it related to the agenda. Ms. King?
Can I just add, please, seconded by me?
Sure. So that ends our public comment period for this, for items on the agenda. If we could just pass that down, and then when we get to Mr. Donovan, if you could put it next to the bag, I think that's a little bit more accessible to people. So that brings us to the Superintendent's comments. Dr. McKinney, when you're ready?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Two things for this evening. First, the Nashua Regional College Fair. Please help us spread the word that Nashua High School South is hosting a regional college fair this, later this month, Monday, October 25, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at South in the gym. The fair is open to any junior or senior from South and North and from surrounding Southern New Hampshire and Northern Massachusetts high schools. It's a wonderful opportunity for students and their parents to get firsthand information about institutions of higher learning and to have their questions answered. Many New England colleges and all New Hampshire colleges will be available, including both Manchester and Durham campuses of UNH, as well as Keene State College in Plymouth State, Nashua Community College, and Riviera University will also be available. In total, more than 100 colleges will be represented at this event, ready to discuss college options with any student, and the regional college fair is a perfect event for seniors who are looking to still finalize their college application list. It's also an opportunity for sophomores and juniors to learn about many different colleges and begin their college search. The second thing for this evening is we're getting close to launching COVID testing in schools. More informations will, more information will be sent to parents shortly, but I wanted to let everyone know that we'll be rolling out two opportunities for families to get tested in our schools to commit to our overall goal of health and wellness. First is the Safer at School screening, which will begin at four elementary schools, Bicentennial, Main Dunstable, Charlotte Ave, and Fairgrounds. And then point-of-care testing, which is a different type of testing that was made available by the state as well. Those kits were delivered to our schools. Our nurses are going to be trained by Public Health this Thursday, which means we'll be up and running with that testing program hopefully by the end of the week or the beginning of next week. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I'm sorry, I wasn't taking notes fast enough. Bicentennial, Fairgrounds, New Curls, and...
Fairgrounds.
Charlotte Ave.
Bicentennial, Main Dunstable, Charlotte Ave, and Fairgrounds.
Okay. And how do parents enroll in this if they want to?
We'll be sending out information for parents to give consent later this, probably next week in multiple languages, and it's done online.
Okay, thank you very much.
The other, sorry.
Go ahead.
The other point-of-care testing is also, consent is required, and that's a paper permission slip that'll be available at schools.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. McKinney? Ms. Oden?
I just want to say thank you. We had somebody speak at one of our meetings, and they, I believe they said that they had to pay $175 for the testing, and I know my grandson happened to be out of school for an upset stomach, but before he went back, he had to have a negative COVID test, and it took two days to get him into his regular doctor for that. So thank you, I appreciate the effort you've put into this. I think it will benefit our families here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Dr. McKinney? Okay, I have one more question, Dr. McKinney. So we're having a college fair. Do we also do FAFSA, like assistance with filing FAFSA's for students?
I would certainly hope so. I probably could benefit from a tutorial again, but I believe Guidance takes care of that. I could follow up and get you the information.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, that was in the high school announcements today.
Is that what Ms. Brunel was going to share with us?
Yeah, I was going to say that going through, my kids going through high school, they always have the FAFSA for the high school kids just around the same time.
Okay. All right, so if you have a high school student, ask them if they paid attention to announcements today, and if not, reach out to Guidance. Thank you. All right. All right, so next is the Student Member of the Board's comments. Ms. Brunel?
Yes, unfortunately, Mr. Dunn is unable to join us tonight due to a soccer game at Memorial, so we're wishing him luck, but as for the students at Nashua High School South, they've been doing really well. They've really been enjoying the sports events and just being back in school and seeing their teachers in person and friends. And on top of that, our boys' soccer team has had an undefeated season, and all the students are really looking forward to the social events such as homecoming and Powder Puff.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, congratulations to South boys that's undefeated, correct? Okay, and we won't mention that to Mr. Dunn. Okay, so I know that finance was moved to Thursday this week. Okay, is, do you know the time off the top of your head, Mr. Donovan? 6:00. Okay. 6:00 PM, and policy is next week?
October 19 at 6:00.
Okay. And curriculum also next week? Do you know which date? Is it Monday or Tuesday?
18.
Okay, 10, 18. So that brings us to the Committee on Human Resources. I see Ms. Ziem wasn't able to make it this evening. Ms. Timmons?
I moved to suspend the rules as we met earlier today, October 22 at 5:30.
2:00.
All in favor of suspending the rules so that we can consider today's HR recommendations, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Timmons.
Yes, I moved to approve personnel recommendation dated October 12, 2021.
2:00.
Okay, all those in favor of approving today's personnel recommendations dated October 12, 2021, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, Ms. Timmons?
No, thank you.
Okay. The HR will meet again right before our next meeting, which I believe is on October the 25th. Okay. Okay, that brings us to Liaison Reports. I know we have a JS SBC Liaison Report. Does anyone have any other Liaison Reports? Okay, seeing none. The JS SBC met last week for a special meeting, and Mr. Parker was kind enough to include a memo in our packets, which is very tiny on my phone because we have decided to go paperless at the board. Mr. Parker, did you wish to speak to it?
Gloria pitched it up. Fine, it's that we needed to order supplies, steel, and other heavier materials because there's such a backlog in the market, and if we wanted to open the new middle school on time September 2024, Harvey recommended that we make that big purchase now so that we could have it when we hopefully break ground next spring. And so it's, some folks were taken aback, but I think Harvey did a great job at explaining why coming now. And so, and the other document is just some repairs that are still being done on Franklin Street School in the range, so Sean Smith automized those items for you, so you can see where the money's going and what for.
Okay, great, thank you. Did anyone have any questions or comments on the memo or the spreadsheet that was in our packets this week? Okay, I don't see any. I also just wanted to add to the JS SBC that the new middle school's variance request was approved. The architects went back and met with the Conservation Commission, and they relocated some parking lots and part of the driveway to allow for a special type of vernal pool, which I wrote down. Hold on, I'm going to find it. It's called Hibernaculum, H-B-E-R-N-A-C-U-L-U-M, which is a special type of vernal pool for these endangered salamanders, and it was very important that we protect their natural habitat. So a big thank you to our architects for that and to the Conservation Commission for working with them, and then to the city's zoning board for giving us that time and then now approving the variance request so that we are able to break ground shortly, which is really exciting. So, and I always think this is a cool opportunity to do a little science education with the kids who will be going to that school and learn about these cool endangered salamanders. So any, have any questions or comments about that? Please don't ask me to say that word again. Okay, great. That's all I have for Liaison Reports. Does anyone have anything else? No?
Oh, I don't know if this is a time to bring it up, but there is the question of naming the school, and I know that you had indicated that we need an ad hoc committee to do so. If this is the appropriate time, maybe we should, the board should think about putting together an ad hoc committee for coming up with a name for the middle school, or if this isn't the appropriate time, you know, we can wait, whatever, on the agenda.
So the policy says that, it's Policy FF, and it says that we need the ad hoc committee to be arranged at least nine months before the opening of the new facility. And so we're scheduled for September of 2024, so I would say that there is significant time between now and then. Did anyone have any thoughts on that question that they wanted to share at this time? Complete silence in the room.
My only, my only thought is I think we should put together an ad hoc committee as soon as possible so that we could come up with a name and then make sure the public is aware of this committee, and whoever is in the, in the public wants to, wants to put someone's name forward, then we should know about it.
Okay. Ms. Oden?
I understand where Mr. Corino is coming from, but we have an election soon, and we will have new members on the board, and I wouldn't want to eliminate any of those new people from the ad hoc committee. So, I think it would be best to wait until you have the new board seated to make sure those people can be included in an ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Oden. I tend to concur with Ms. Oden with only a few months left until we have a new board seated. I just, like with the superintendent search, we want to be fair. Go ahead, Mr. Corino.
My only concern is timing. And you said we need nine months ahead of time. So, if the board can move and get it done, I'm fine with waiting. But I know the way we do business, sometimes we keep kicking the can down the road. But I'm fine with waiting for the next board to do the naming, as long as we can get it done in time and, you know, we don't leave it hanging, because I think it's very important.
Agreed. Go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
I agree with Mr. Corino. It is important, but I also agree with Ms. Oden. We have, we have quite a while before September of 2024. And in fact, we don't just have the election coming up in a few weeks. We shall have another election two years after that in 2023. So, the changes in the board may be significant by the January before the new school is opening. So, I prefer to wait.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. And I think we can rely on Mr. Parker to keep this in his to-do list to remind the JS SBC, or remind the BOE members who are on the JS SBC. We're not gonna forget. So, okay. The next item of new business, well, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business that we are ready to take up today. Did anyone have anything that I missed? Okay. So, new business, we have a request from an Eagle Scout to approve their Eagle Scout project. Is Mr. Korandla in the audience today? I do not see him. Perhaps, Mr. Donovan, you could speak to the project since he went before the Finance Committee?
Well, he actually did not go in front of the Finance Committee.
Oh, dear.
Due to our meeting being canceled last month. But he is hoping, my understanding was he was supposed to be here. I'm not sure what happened. But he would, if he plans on getting the work done, which he was hoping to do it in late October and early November, maybe it can be considered without his presence. What he is choosing to do is, if you go to central office now, and you'll notice the new garden on the left side of the building.
Yeah.
The, he plans on having, clearing a trail from the garden that goes behind, goes down, and then takes a right and goes behind Led Street School and comes out right next to the playground there. Well, it's actually not the playground, where there's an old, I believe, softball field there. I actually tried to find the path myself the other day. I used to spend a lot of time in the woods as a kid, but I'm not as good in the woods as I used to be. So, I had a hard time finding the path, but I found parts of it. So, I guess, to me, there is a bunch of work to make sure that you can actually find the path these days. So, he's got his work cut out for him. And he's also going to, you know, build, put a rest area in there and find a, create an educational find the species mini game, which, you know, might be kind of fun.
It does sound fun. And I see that he included his packet, which we have in our packet. Do we have that available to put on the screen? At least the first page of it? No, I was thinking for the audience, since he's not here to present. I don't want to put anything that has his personal information up because he's still a student.
I don't, do you have it there?
Okay. Okay. It's on the, it's in the information. I also am looking at it and wondering if we need to take down a page of this off of our materials to make sure that that didn't go out. So, did anyone want to make a motion on this Eagle Scout project? Ms. Oden, and then Mr. Corino?
I will make a motion to approve. I read through it. It's very much. He has everything that they required, so I will move to approve his Eagle Scout project.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Did anyone want to speak to it? I'll just mention that he does have a project sponsor through Grove Nashua, who are doing those gardens, the community gardens that you see popping up all over downtown Nashua. So, that is very helpful. And he does have a very extensive description of what he wants to do here in our packet. Anyone else? No? Alright. All in favor of approving Mr. Korandla's Eagle Scout project? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Korandla. And so, him not being here, how does he get notified? Oh, in the back. Hello, Scoutmaster. Did you wish to come down and speak to the project? No. I noticed that you waited till after the vote, too. Alright, well, welcome. Thank you for being here on his behalf. Okay. That brings us to our, barring new business, that brings us to our second public comment period of the evening. Anyone have anything else? Okay. Mr. Donovan, if you could grab that sign-up sheet for me? Once again, this public comment period is scheduled for 15 minutes. We ask that everyone keep their comments brief and to the point so that everyone can have a chance to speak. Okay. I will read the first person and then the person following them. Ms. Poehl had signed up but indicated she wanted to speak in this section, so Ms. Poehl could go first, and then Ms. King second.
Hi, I'm Tracy Poehl. I live at 5 Bangor Street in Nashua. I have four children, one that just graduated and three in the school system. I know COVID and masks have been talked about endlessly. I don't even want to go near that. I would like to bring up the bullying situations in the schools. Heather and I had talked at length a few years ago when she first ran for the Board of Education. Nothing seems to have changed. The policies in place seem to protect the bully instead of the victim. Six years ago, my daughter, 18, had her hand shattered and suffered two concussions because of bullying in middle school. We've only been in school for seven weeks. In that seven weeks, my 11-year-old daughter has been assaulted three times and sexually assaulted. They're 11. The Assistant Principal has handled the situations wonderfully. But my daughter's new standard of a good day is when she can walk down the halls without having a boy touch her in any way. When she came home from school today, I said to her, "How was your day?" She said, "Well, I got to wear a skirt and nobody put their hand up it." Is this what we're teaching our girls? I, please do better. Please. Do something. Please show our girls that this type of behavior will not be tolerated and that their voices can be heard. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Ms. Poehl. Ms. King? After Ms. King, we have Sonia Prince.
My name is Crystal. Sorry I wasn't able to make the last couple, oh, I live on Fairmont Street, sorry. I wasn't allowed to, I wasn't able to make the last couple of board meetings, but they were a crapshoot anyway. So, I'm here tonight because I promised a few of you that I would be here every single time. I had to work the last couple of times, and, you know, mental health takes priority. However, I have a couple things. One, I am so happy that we are gonna have a brand-new board in January, because with the exception of like, three of you, you guys have done crap for our kids. Crap in the last however long you've been sitting on the board. I am beyond ecstatic. And I'm sorry to say this, but I'm also beyond ecstatic that we're gonna have a new superintendent, because no matter what, at the end of the day, like, you know, Tracy's my sister, and I'm sure she didn't want the public to know that, but oh, well. Besides Mr. Parker, I can't turn to anybody other than Ms. Howard at Nashua South when it comes to the mental well-being of my children. And that's sad and depressing, and I don't trust my kid in this school district. I don't trust any of, anybody's kids in this school district. And all of you guys should be ashamed of yourselves for letting bullying going along? That's crazy. That's insane. Kids aren't just kids. They're not assholes. Excuse my language, but they're not. They're taught that. They're taught that it's okay because of how we act as a society. Before I got here tonight, Ms. Raymond, I heard that you were rude and yelling. I'm becoming of the president of the school board. I'm becoming of a professional. I'm becoming of a mother. Representing our school board? Ridiculous. I'm sorry, but, you know, you guys want to sit here and preach mask-wearing and all of these things and kick somebody out, a board member with a doctor's note, but allow others to talk without their mask on, sitting inches away from everybody? Yeah, I'm talking without my mask on right now. You're absolutely right, because you guys do it. That's why. So, word to the wise, like, honestly, you guys do need to do better. Every single one of you. Every single one. And some of you guys are running for alderman? What a joke.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Prince, and then Sandra Maggio?
Hi, Sonia Prince, 49 Tufts Drive. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I've been wanting to come for a very long time. Been vaccinated three times, but I still have a low immune system, so masks help reduce the spread. So, I really appreciate the respect. I have another friend who wanted to be here. She also has low immune, but her mother couldn't make it. So, anyway, thank you for that. When it comes to testing, I just wanted to say thank you to the superintendent. Better late than never. I've been hoping for testing for a very long time. And like one of the board members said, it's difficult to get an appointment these days because there's so many cases. So, it'll be nice to have it at school. Maybe we can get a grip of the spread before it happens. I would like to see temperature checks taken. My kids in college, they get temperature checks done as they walk into any building, and it does reduce the spread. They've been catching a lot of cases that way. So, I would like to see that, but it hasn't happened yet. And I'm sorry that you're all been subject to this heckling. It's very unprofessional, and I don't think any of you deserve it. So, thank you for your patience. A lot of these people are running for stuff, and it's unprofessional. There's kids in the room. There's students watching. It's a publicly recorded meeting. It's just unacceptable behavior. So, thank you for being so patient. And you don't deserve this. You guys are all volunteers. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Excuse me. Please don't yell from the audience. I know you missed the, the rules at the beginning, but one of the rules is please don't yell. Just want to interject. I see that Mr. Korandla, Kore-and-la? Close?
Yeah, close enough, yeah.
Okay. Never close enough. You can absolutely correct me. It's here. If you have a little bit of patience, as soon as our public comments are done, I would invite you to come and speak. Okay, great. I lost my place. Oh, Sandra Maggio, and then Sue Newman.
Okay, before I start, I just want to say, wow, that your grandson or whoever that child was had to get COVID tested because he had a stomach ache. That is so sad to me. How many kids go to school and they have a bellyache or a headache or a runny nose every time? You're gonna be swabbing them for COVID. I hope these are gonna be consent forms that are gonna be sent to parents for the COVID testing, and I hope parents are going to really think twice about having their kids subjected to testing every single time they have a sniffle. Okay, just want to remind everybody, once again, there are 11,784 students in Nashua for the 2021-22 school year. As of today, again, I went on the covid19newhampshire.org website, age group 0 to 19, zero deaths. Then, I went on to total onsite active cases in all of Nashua, in all the schools, 10. Give me a break. Children have an almost 100% survival rate. You do not, you do understand that Fauci has been lying to the public, right? Have you been paying attention, any of you? Do you watch, like, normal news, not fake CNN? You know he helped fund the virus, and he lied to Congress about it? Hey, he was caught doing that. But still, you take the word of a liar. These people are not real scientists or doctors. They're paid, paper pushers, and they're sitting there getting rich, and they love the control they have over you. And I think some of you like the control, too. These mandates are draconian and tyrannical. You're ignoring the real science and now accusing parents of domestic terrorism because they will not be silenced. Well, nope, we will not be silenced. Not while you continue to abuse our children. You can't mask our voices, and you shouldn't do it to one of your own board members.
Thank you, Ms. Maggio. Sue Newman, and then our last person is Lindsay, I can't read her last name.
Good evening. Sue Newman, Charlotte Avenue. I had some things I was really planning to say, but I've switched gears on this. I'm just gonna say thank you for the masking policy at the, at the school and for people who come into the building. And I think we should all be grateful as a community that we have access to either phone in or to watch it on TV or to partake. So, people aren't, it should be more, people should be able to be more engaged with the Board of Education if they choose to. This morning, early, I was driving towards Merrimack, and I passed a bunch of students, our young scholars going off to Penachuk. When I've seen them, different ones, when I've seen them on different mornings, I haven't seen kids wearing masks, but I know they're carrying them. And this morning, I saw several of them with their masks on as they walked. Nobody was having any kind of an issue with them. They just did it. It's just the way it was, it's just yet.
Ma'am, I'm gonna have to ask you to leave.
No problem leaving, Heather, because it's disgusting that you guys are programming these children to be little friggin', little, oh, it's just like, anybody watch Pink Floyd? The wall?
Thank you. Please continue, Ms. Newman.
Thank you. You know, because of that comment, I am gonna read some of the things that I had. I carry something with me that I copied. It was off the internet. It was a letter to the, it was an opinion piece in the Storm Lake Iowa Times. It was printed last December 10th. It was titled "A Nation of Wienies." And I, and I copied it because my uncle- And I, and I copied it because my uncle, who now is 97, but he was 96 last year, served in World War II in the Pacific Theater. And, and this editorial piece was printed on the anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day. One of the comments in it was that, this was going on after 79 years ago, when Pearl Harbor attacks set off World War II, hundreds of millions of Americans tossed aside their political differences and worked together in whatever way they could to defeat our enemies. Meanwhile, now I'm jumping around with this here. Meanwhile, the folks back home did their parts to contribute to the war effort. You couldn't buy a car, a new car, for nearly five years as the auto factories were converted to build tanks and airplanes. Commodities like gasoline and tires were rationed. Butter was restricted. Meat and vegetables were in short supply, so the troops could be fed. Folks were encouraged to grow their own produce. People collected tinfoil and bought war bonds. Because of this determination and can-do spirit, America won the war. It's hard to imagine that now. Today, we're faced with an enemy just as deadly. And again, this was the op-ed piece. And with a life-saving vaccine ready to be distributed now, nearly half the nation says they aren't sure they want to take it. It's the greatest generation versus a selfish generation. Americans today would never do what it took to win World War II. The least, okay, it took us four long years to defeat the Axis scourge. We can beat back COVID in a third of that time if we just start acting like Americans again. And on that note, let me just say that as a old former board member, probably the most controversial thing I had to deal with way back when was a redistricting situation. You all have had to deal with things I couldn't even imagine. As for bullying that's going on in schools, I mean, it goes on unfortunately, but honestly, I have seen behavior by people who have attended these board meetings to be outrageous. And it's not just Nashua. It's in several parts of the country this is going on. I don't know if some community or some state is looking to get an award for the most outrageous behavior exhibited at board meetings. But if people who attend the board meetings can civilly give their opinion without being horribly outrageous, it would be helpful to the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. All right, and lastly, we have Lindsay, whose last name I can't read.
Okay. First of all, I have way better things to do than attend these meetings. It's the last thing that I want to do, but I really care about my kid that much. It's why I attend them. You can talk about World War II all you want, but remember the Holocaust? That's what's happening in this country right now, and you people think that what you're doing is for the good of the people. I have to think that that's really what you think, and it's not just some power trip. But you're so beyond wrong with what you're doing, and you're going to realize it, and you're going to feel really, really stupid when you realize that you just lost all your freedoms, you put everybody through hell, you wasted half your life fighting about it. You know, I don't know. I don't know why we have to wear masks to this meeting when you people go grocery shopping and people don't, there's no mask mandates anywhere else, and you're fine, you're alive, you haven't dropped dead, you're not in the hospital. Half of you people don't have kids in the school system either, so I don't know why you come to this, and I don't know why it's such a big deal for you. I think this is completely ridiculous. I think you people need to focus on your kids. If you have them, if you're here right now and you have kids, you have way more bigger things to be worrying about with these kids. Bullying, the fact that you people don't make that a topic and control that situation is unbelievable, number one. Number two, I haven't heard a single person on this board, anytime I've come, mention anything about the mental health of these kids. Someone tonight mentioned that her grandson was out for two days because he had a stomach ache because he was waiting for a COVID test. Do you know what that does to a family? To a mother that has to take off work for two days to stay home with her perfectly healthy kid to get a COVID test, and that kid's missing out on its education because you people want to play politics? It's disgusting. I've never seen anything more disgusting in my life. If this is the biggest thing you have going on in your lives, where you want to control everybody with your masks, you're mentally deranged. The kids are fine, okay? If your kid can't be exposed to germs, they're probably not in school anyway. Kids get sick. It's part of life. Build up your immune systems. Grow some, you know, smarten up, be brave, go out there. World War II, you want to talk about World War II? I know they don't make them like that anymore because of what you people are doing to the kids and how you're raising them and the thoughts that you're putting in your own heads and everybody else's. It's crazy. It's beyond ludicrous. And you can sit there with your masks on and then take your masks off and talk, and it's, what is the logic? There is zero, zero logic. Worry about the children. Worry about their mental health. Let's make this world better for the children. Enough with the masks. Enough with the politics. Nobody's going to vote you back in. I hope you know that. You're done. And I'm going to make sure everybody else is aware of all you people and makes the right decision, goes and votes, and I'll, I'm on it. So, good luck and good riddance. You people are a disgrace, and I will praise you, I will praise you to the mountains when you do something good, when I see you actually care.
Wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our second public comment period. During the public comment periods, Mr. Corandla, I'm going to get it right, Corandla, arrived regarding his Eagle Scout project, and thank you so much for coming out here tonight. And I just wanted to give you the opportunity to speak a little bit more about the project. We did approve it based on the application in our packet, but I thought it might be nice for you to share a little bit about why you chose the project and where you see it going. Okay, great.
So, yeah.
Just lift it up so that we can hear you in the microphone.
Can you guys hear me now?
That's much better.
Great, yeah. So, hi, my name is Sri. I'm currently a senior at Nashville High School South, and I'm a scout from Troop 261. And I'm working on my Eagle project right now. So, when I was working on one of my friend's Eagle projects, the project sponsor for his project noticed that there was this trail behind Led Street. As a little bit of background, his project was to build some picnic tables for the community garden next to Led Street Elementary School. And we thought about what we could do with it, maybe. And we realized we could probably clear it up a little and build a bench, sitting area in the middle of the trail to act as a source of recreation and also entertainment for the children and the teachers at the school. So, the project mostly involves clearing the trail. Luckily, there's not a lot of work other than raking. There is a pretty clear path throughout the trail. I mean, there's still a lot of raking to be done, so.
We're laughing because Mr. Donovan had some challenges finding the trail.
I could find parts of it. I couldn't find the whole thing. Better rake.
I will rake my heart out, yeah. So, yeah, you know, it's, it's a very labor-intensive project, and I'd like to get it done before mid-November, obviously, so it doesn't start freezing over, and it gets really hard to do that. And I'm also, as I said, I'm going to build a bench, a table in the middle of the trail just to act as a rest area in case teachers want to stop. And also, I want to have some signage on the trail to point out specific trees and species that live in the area, you know, to add on to that recreational aspect while also keeping it educational for the students. So, does anyone have any questions?
I think this sounds delightful. I'm especially excited about the signage about the local flora and fauna. I think that that's a skill and a base of knowledge that's been lost over the most recent generations over COVID. I know in my family, we took up birding, and then I started learning about native plants, and there's a wealth of information out there that I don't know. So, it's been a humbling experience. So, I'm excited about the idea of having an opportunity for kids to learn this at a young age. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Gilio.
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
All right, well, thank you so mu, oh, go ahead, Ms. Odin.
I'm sorry. I, I want to say thank you, and I do know that right next door is, I believe, a center for senior living, and I think it's a nice place for them to, to get out and get some fresh air and get some exercise. So, thank you. I think the location is ideal for a lot of people. Thank you.
Yeah. So, I've been, we've been discussing that as well, and there is also like this nice path that connects to the senior home. So, technically, all I need is the board's approval, but I'm also going to reach out to them and see if I can get that connected there.
Oh, how wonderful. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. I think this sounds like a great project. Thank you so much for putting so much effort into it. Do you have a plan for what kind of material you're going to use to make the educational interactive? Are you going to do it?
So, I have to do a little bit of research. When I talked to the Eagle Board about the type of wood, you know, obviously, they said maybe don't use birch, but, you know, obviously, if it's not pressure-treated, I got to seal it to make sure nothing bad goes wrong. But yeah, I still have to do a bit of research into that.
I think, and I will say, your plan was very thorough, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for being with us tonight and being patient so that we could hear directly from you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, great. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything further for, for this evening. Just a note about what's coming up. Dr. McKinney and I met last week and talked about kind of what's in the queue for meetings. The GPA Class Rank Committee has been meeting, and so they're working on a report for us, and so that will be coming up end of this month or perhaps in November. Depends on how much they get done. Dr. McKinney's looking at me like it's November now.
It'll be on your way to the board on the 10/25 meeting.
Oh, okay. That's exciting. So, also, the official attendance is taken at the beginning of October each year, so we should get that information in November. A number of assessments were done to find out where our students are, both academically and with their social, emotional, and their behavioral needs. So, we should have that information at the beginning of November so that we can start to talk about supports and structures. I'm not sure if that will go directly here or via curriculum. That's not really entirely up to me, so I will trust administration's guidance on that. But I'm looking forward to seeing all of this stuff because I know that we've all been wondering throughout COVID where everybody's at and what our, our students and our staff need that the board can help provide. So, if there's anything else that people would like to see on agendas, please feel free to email me or Dr. McKinney, and we'll add it to our running queue. Okay? Just a, just a reminder that our policy says that agenda items need to be to myself or Dr. McKinney by the Tuesday before the meeting so that we have enough time to gather materials. All right, with that, it's time for board member comments. Ms. Brown asked to go first.
I'm good.
You have changed your mind?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. In which case, I think I'll start with Ms. Gilio and go this way.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that the reason we're all wearing masks is to keep everyone who comes into this room safe. And people like Ms. Prince and other people who have immune disorders were not able to come to our meetings when people were not paying attention to the mask request. I think that everyone should be kept as safe as possible, and I like looking around the room and seeing everyone masked. None of us like it, but it's not a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Ms. Timmons?
I have no comment.
Okay. Ms. Bishop?
I also have no comments.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam, Madam President. I just have a couple of quick things. I am, I want to thank administration for bringing testing. That's something that I've been sort of advocating for, for a while. I think it's great that we have COVID testing. I want to thank the students for the art from Nashville High South. My daughter was in that art program with Ms. Perringer, and it was a great experience. And the last thing, I see in the packet, we have a Walk to School Day. I think this is great. So, I hope all the parents get this notice. Do you know what school this is for? It, it doesn't really say what school. It says Matt Doobie Field that they're going to be meeting in. Well, I, I just want to say.
I think it's New Searl.
New Searl, okay, great. I just want to give a shout out to school nurse Deb Richardson for getting kids to walk to school. That's what we need more of. I've been advocating safe routes to schools and that we get kids out there walking. So, I, I'm very happy about the packet today. It's, things are happening that, and we're progressing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Brown, still nothing, or do you have something?
Congratulations to our Eagle Scout. We got us projects approved, and it has been delightful to hear from the teachers about the art projects and actually getting the descriptions made it actually a more immersive experience, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Odin?
I just want to thank Ms. James and Ms. Walsh for posting this artwork and, and making sure that we are aware of some of the phenomenal opportunities our students have in our schools. Just amazing when I look around. I can't draw a straight line with rulers, so I really appreciate it. But I also went to one of our football games and then watched the other one, most of it on TV. But I want to compliment our players. Both teams from North and South were in very close games, went back and forth, and the sportsmanship and the behavior, the, the students, it was, it was just nice. And you can see people are appreciative to get out and get back to some type of a normal situation. Matter of fact, I'm not sure about South, but North had their band there, and it was nice to see the band students again. So, thank you to everybody who's doing so much under difficult situations in our, in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. I just have a couple of notes of community events that are happening at the library. The first is they're put out a call for artists, and seeing all the art here reminded me of it. So, if we have any artists in the community, including student artists, who want to have their work displayed, the library is looking for people for their first-floor display space. And then the second is their Community Reads Program. They've picked a youth author and book this year and an adult book. And this week is, at 2:00 PM on the 17th, is the Zoom conference with one of the authors, and that's Yaga Yisi for her book Homegoing. If you haven't read it, it's absolutely amazing. I can't recommend it enough. And on 10/23 at 2:00 PM is a Zoom with Rita Williams Garcia, whose book Clayton Bird Goes Underground is the youth community reads book, also a really great book, and I recommend it to anyone who's looking for something to do with their student. is the youth community reads book, also a really great book, and I recommend it to anyone who's looking for something to do with their student. And so that is all I have this evening. So at this point, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, the motion was by Ms. Odin. It was seconded by Ms. Gilio. All in favor of adjourning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 7:15.